This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
... So certainly, thank you to Josh back there in the corner and to Scott for the work that they've done to help facilitate the task force. And so, last night, you heard some of the information and report from the task force if you get a chance to see it. And it's now timely to talk about what we want to do. And so, we've got the data there, we've got the information, the task force. Speaking of data, there's a lot of data in that report, but at the same time, I think the task force identified that there's a lot of gaps in the data. And so, you know, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about what we know and what we don't know. I think many of you have heard me say before that it's really important that when we try to solve a problem, we've defined the problem. And that we've defined the problem, then we know what it is we're trying to solve. Because we want the solutions to work to solve the problem, and that we've defined the problem to solve. So, at the same time, though, we don't want to just stall up because we have a lack of data. So, we kind of find ourselves in this situation where we're still trying to define the problem, but we don't want that to be the reason we all move forward. So, there's a lot of suggestions in the task force and a lot of things for us to tackle. What we want to do tonight is take a little bit of a deeper dive into the ALIS data. There's been a lot of conversation about the data and what that report is, and that's what we listen to. And so, we want to talk a little bit about the ALIS data. Talk about a three-pronged approach to affordable housing that we're going to be recommending. Then, we want to talk about some ideas the staff has in terms of staff work plans. And then, this is, the way this is working out, it's actually cleaning itself up very nicely for the goals conversation that the council's going to be having at the end of. So, we want to really cue that up so that it's right in everybody's mind, so that when we're talking about the biannual goals that we want to set as a council for the community that they afford a housing is certainly primed to be part of that conversation. So, with that, let's just jump right into a little bit of talking about the ALIS data. Because again, it gets referenced a lot, but I don't know that everybody has had a chance to really understand what it is or know where it comes from. The ALIS data is an initiative from the United Way at the national level. There are 15 states that have been participating. Every two years, they update the data. You can see up there a map of the 15 states that have been participating in the ALIS data. You've heard it before, but the ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income-constrained Employee. And it's basically, you know, a way to think about it is it's the survival budget for a household. In other words, what is a household survival budget? And it's comprised of a whole bunch of different elements that I think it's important to understand and talk about. Certainly, one is housing. And so, in terms of the housing budget, it's based upon HUD's fair market rent for a efficiency apartment if you're a single person, a one-bedroom apartment if you're a head of household with a child, or a two-bedroom apartment for a family of three or more. It also includes and takes into account childcare. So, there's a childcare budget that's based upon the annual cost of taking care of an infant and one preschool child. That's kind of one of the assumptions that goes in childcare. And I think there's interesting statistics later coming up on that. From food, it's based upon the thrifty level of the, which is the lowest of the four levels of the USDA food plans. For transportation, it does talk about transportation by a car and by public transportation. And this data comes from the Bureau of Statistics and the Consumer Expenditure Survey. Healthcare is based upon the nominal out-of-pocket healthcare costs. And it does not include the cost of the actual healthcare insurance. So, in some respects, the cost of healthcare that they have built into this is probably a little low. And particularly, you know, for our, for at least the ALIS data in the state of Wisconsin, they use the same data for every county. And we know that in Eau Claire County, the healthcare costs are actually higher than a lot of other places. So, you know, in Eau Claire County, you've got the, you know, not only does the ALIS data not include the actual insurance premium or the share of the premium that the person would have, but it also doesn't take into account, you know, in Eau Claire County, the health insurance costs are actually a little higher than you would find in the rest of the state. Technology is something that is important to most people and is becoming a big part of our lives. And so, there's some assumptions about technology in everybody's life. They have a miscellaneous category, which is 10% of the total budget. So, they basically put miscellaneous in there, about 10%. And then, there's taxes, which are the federal, state, and income taxes, as well as the social security and Medicare taxes. So, let's take a look at affordable housing in that national context and also from the state of Wisconsin. So, and then, we'll take a deeper dive down into Eau Claire County and what that means. So, at the national level, the median income in Wisconsin is 56,008, so let's call it 57,000, which puts us eighth among the 15 ALIS states. So, we're right in the middle, basically, in terms of, the state of Wisconsin, as a median, we're right in the middle of all the other states with a median income of 57,000. However, as a percentage of the median income, the housing costs in Eau Claire rank 14th among 15. So, in terms of the 15 states that are in the ALIS data, when you take housing as a percentage of the median income, we're actually the second lowest, I mean, of the 15 states that are in the ALIS data when you talk about the housing piece.
For the entire state.
For the entire state. This is the average, right, for the entire state. There are other things that are included in the ranking. And for food, you can see we're, as a state, not as Eau Claire County, as a state, we're 10th. And the other thing is the housing. As a state, and for the median income for housing, people are paying 15.5% of their median income for housing in the state of Wisconsin. And again, that's the second lowest in all of the ALIS reporting. For food, people are spending, in the state of Wisconsin, are spending about 11% of the median income. And it puts us as a rank of 10th out of 15. Technology is 1.16, transportation is 6. But here's the one that I found really, really interesting, childcare. Childcare, so we're sixth, so, you know, sixth out of 15 in terms of the cost of childcare, but 26%. Think about that, 26% of somebody's median income is actually going towards childcare in the ALIS report in the state of Wisconsin, yes?
I think you've already said this, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So, this is saying that in Wisconsin, on average, Wisconsinites pay 15.5% of their income.
Of the median income, yes.
I don't understand that.
So, that means that, where's Jay?
I'm right here.
Jay, do you want to add to that or help clarify that?
Well, I mean, yeah, on average, I should say, the, in Wisconsin, the median income is up there, it's 56,811. I believe the Wisconsin average housing cost was $735 a month. So, 15, you know, 15.5% of that median income or of somebody's annual income is going towards the housing, for the housing costs.
And 26% is going towards childcare.
Towards childcare. So, actually, as a percentage of the median income, more dollars are going towards childcare than towards housing.
But, so that means median income 56 means there's many people above that as or below that, correct?
Yep, right, it's just as many as.
So, for everyone in our community that's making below that, which is the 30s, thousands, 20s even, 40s, they could be paying, you know, it could be a higher percentage. There would obviously be a higher percentage of housing, because housing isn't going to naturally decline as you make less money.
Most of these costs are not going to decline.
Right.
So, the healthcare.
But, that's just something to keep in mind, is like, if your income is not 56, it's 30, and you're still probably going to be paying something like $700 a month.
So, I think the.
It's just, it's a helpful understanding.
Right, and we're going to drill down, and we'll get down to some of our specific numbers. This is kind of over the 30,000 foot, we'll come down a little bit.
So, I think the, so you're right, Jeremy, with that. The context is that in terms of what people are spending their money on, right, is that in that relationship of them, that there are other drivers that are making it difficult for people to afford housing than just the housing cost. And, you know, so when you look at the, like, the childcare as an example, there's, that's actually a higher, you know, percentage of the budget than, on average, than the housing piece. If you look at the others.
Would you also, just to clarify on that, though. So, what that's saying is, in Wisconsin, amongst all the states that do ALIS, we're like, almost the least.
We're 14th, we're the lowest.
We're about the least expensive state for housing.
Housing, yes.
Wisconsin's always been sort of.
Second, second to the bottom in terms of housing.
In general.
So, then, the other, again, this is the national context, you have the miscellaneous, the taxes, the healthcare. So, the other things that I think are worth maybe noting in the ALIS report is food, technology, transportation, and healthcare were all fixed numbers for the entire, for all the counties. So, in other words, they didn't vary in any way. But the childcare and the miscellaneous and the taxes and the housing are then looked at by county, and they vary by county. But the technology, transportation, and healthcare, and that's why I said earlier, you know, some of this stuff is maybe not fully reported high enough, some of it a little bit lower, and again, for example, healthcare, we're, you know, we're being credited with the same healthcare costs in Eau Claire as a state, as if you live in Madison. And we know that Madison has significantly cheaper healthcare costs than Eau Claire. So, that's at the bigger picture in the entire state. If we drill down a little bit into Eau Claire County itself, this is where you start to see the income issue. You have the state average income or median income is 56,000 to 57,000 dollars. But in Eau Claire County, you know, that's like $50,000. So, about a $7,000 difference in the median wages between Eau Claire County and the rest of the state. So, that 7K, if you put that into a full-time work, that's like $3.35 an hour difference, you know, that is lower here in Eau Claire than it would be for the median income in the rest of the state. So, if you think of 72 counties and roughly, you know, if you were to chunk it up into thirds, right, you know, for our wages, you know, we are down at, you know, at the bottom two-thirds, basically. We're 22 in the, or I'm sorry, we're 41st out for the income. So, the 41 out of 72, we're kind of down there, you know, you've got the bottom third, the middle third, and the upper third. You know, for our income, we're down at that bottom third. But almost everything else, right, we're, for our costs, we're up in, say, the top third. So, we're like 22nd high for the, for health insurance cost, or I mean, housing costs. When you look at the state as a whole and you look at all 72 counties, we rate 22 for housing costs, but for wages, we're 41. So, you know, almost a whole third lower in wages as compared to the housing costs. So, there, you know, but the housing costs are, on average, with the rest of the state. So, if you look at what Jay said earlier, Eau Claire County's average housing cost is 735 a month. That is the state average. So, we have the state average as it relates to the housing costs. And all the other ones, you can see childcare, we're 23, taxes, we're 23, miscellaneous, 23. So, all of those are in that 22, 23 ranking, except for income, which is down there at 41. And so, so really, just to kind of give some perspectives, you know, the conclusions of this, that, you know, our costs for housing are, as a state, one of the lowest of the 15 states that are out there, and the cost of housing in Eau Claire County is average with the rest of the state. But we do have lower wages. And the other thing is that, you know, there's a lot of other factors that come into what makes affordable for someone to buy housing. And, you know, principally to that, it's transportation and healthcare. And so, as we look at affordable housing or being able to afford housing, it's a complicated picture. And there's a lot of other variables that go into this. So, Scott, you've got some other data that you want to drill down and talk about?
Absolutely, thanks Dale. Just to get a little bit more into the weeds with the numbers here, this is a slide shown yesterday. As we talk about the different, you know, overall numbers related to ALIS data. So, these are a number of households, again, this is county-level data, just keep that in mind as well. So, took, lots of information came from Jay, thanks Jay for helping to set the stage a bit. And now, we're kind of coming down that elevation here to look at more at the county-level data. There are some specifics in the right-hand table that talk about each of the different cities, villages, and towns. And you can see, city of Eau Claire, 46% is at ALIS. And poverty, again, it's a combined number. So, those who are obviously struggling one way or the other. And in terms of number of households, that's 26,500 households that fall into that. As Dale was setting up with the information, obviously, that's not just something to attribute to housing costs. It's a lot of other components. The task force, though, that's where they ended up kind of wrestling with the data, is that their task was, their charge was to really look at that housing piece, how does the housing play into this? But we just wanted to keep in mind that's not exclusive, it's not mutually exclusive. It's something that comes together with all these different pieces that really do play a large impact, in some ways perhaps even a larger impact than just housing costs alone. So, these are, just some other information that was taken straight from the two-pager that the United Way put together with the ALIS data. You can see here the different household types. Dale's kind of set the stage for that and explained kind of different types of households that they really keyed in on as kind of these samples or anecdotal, in a way, household types. That middle one is families with children, that's what you'll see on the right-hand column. Here, if we can see that very well, but it's probably worse if you print that. But that's where you can see, for example, the monthly housing cost. That right-hand column says it's 735. And as we're showing you, 26% is a great number, going to childcare. And that's that large number is 1294, which just makes you scratch your head thinking, how is that even possible? But you can see how housing lines up with some of these other costs. Healthcare, transportation, very much similar to that. Taxes even as well. You can see here, monthly total and annual total, and essentially based on this median wage. So, talking about $31, you're right at that middle income. As a single adult, again, that's obviously a little bit lower cost, lower wage as well, because on the right-hand side, it's taking into account two children, two adults, just for setting the stage here. So, moving into different sectors, we're going to talk about some employment. So, we have wages are an issue, you've identified that probably about four or five different times here. But what does that mean in terms of, you know, in the ALIS data? And this is, again, more broadly, I don't believe, Josh, you're correcting me wrong, if this is Eau Claire County, or this is statewide, or this is national?
I don't honestly know for the ALIS data.
Okay, we'll go with.
It's county by county for ALIS.
It may be county, I just lost the label on it, I apologize, so, jump ahead. It must be county, I think we have this broken down by, we had Chippewa County, we have Eau Claire. So, there are two different reports, by the way. We're just focusing on Eau Claire County tonight. We can certainly share any of the Chippewa County data as well. What this is trying to show, though, is the different wage distribution in terms of size of employees. You can see that, you know, larger firms obviously are able to pay larger wages. And it all seems to play out, the larger the firm, the larger the wages. Point being here is that we want to emphasize, moving forward, the importance of trying to work with folks like Mr. Aaron White and bring in those higher-range jobs, bring in companies that can start raising the level of our baseline or median income. A little bit more specifically, this is from our friends with Cedar Corp, they put this number together. The orange is, should I put it? The orange is Eau Claire County, green is Wisconsin, and blue is national. So, we're going from highest to lowest, just for orientation here. These are different wage distributions in terms of these different ranges. So, you can see, the majority of Eau Claire County wages are going to be in that lower end, as I mentioned. It's that, you know, statewide, Dale mentioned, it's around 57, is that what you said?
Is our median 49 if that's correct?
Yes, our, yeah, on Eau Claire County itself, we're looking at 48 to 49. Some numbers actually show it much lower, at 42. So, that's where we land in this 25,000 to 50,000. So, the majority of our graph, as you see here, is at, that is in this range. So, as the wages go up, we have a pretty good number in the 50 to 75, but all of a sudden, things just fall off. So, 75 to 100, the US wage distribution in that range is a lot higher than Eau Claire County. And it gets worse from there. So, not to say everybody should be making over 100,000, well, maybe everybody should, but not that everybody can or that's, you know, possible, as we showed in this, this is the kind of average from some of these wages here. But the point being is that majority of the, again, just to reiterate the fact that income and wages are lower than elsewhere, especially compared both to the state in certain segments, as well as to the national level. This is a table, or graph, I should say, sorry, that shared at the last work session. It's one that is, it's good in its graphic expression, but needs some additional refinement. It's one that staff have discussed as well, and it paints a good picture in terms of what the story we're trying to tell, but there are a lot of fine tuning that needs to happen yet with this. What it's just trying to show visually is the impact of those wage segments and what is, I guess, affordable and what's available, I should say, the inventory, the housing stock compared with your wage. So, to walk through this, let's see, quickly, but to get just an overview here. The blue bars are the different households in a certain income bracket. The orange bars attributed to that income bracket are the, is the housing stock or the inventory that the income in that blue bar can afford. So, that's very rudimentary, I think. There are a lot of things such as housing preference, you know, rent versus owning, you know, where the students fall into this, so on and so forth. So, a lot of other variables that are either in here, not in here, or aren't telling the full story. But again, visually, just want to depict some of this to show that, as you can see, in many of the, these income segments, the blue bar is higher than the orange bar, which is the inventory. Now, as you look at the wage distribution, again, going back to that income bracket, this third one to the left is really where the median income lands. And you can see the inventory is pretty supportive. But again, the higher you go, just not to say a bad thing in terms of wages, the less there is actually supportive housing for that affordability. So, what you have is kind of this compression concept where all those in these categories, to the middle and to the right, are competing for the same housing that perhaps otherwise would be easily accessible to those in these categories to the left. And then, you have the same on the lower end, where there are, you know, folks in the lower-income brackets that have very little to anything available. Perhaps they're going to be, you know, remaining in that rental category. Perhaps they're going to be overspending and trying to move up into the available housing. Those are the things we're trying to identify. So, it doesn't tell the whole picture, but.
Just to make sure that we're clear, this is, these are owner-occupied.
Yes.
This is not rent, the rental housing stock.
Correct, I'm talking about kind of two different things with it, but yes, it's owner-occupied, I think.
That was going to be my question as well, was this owner-occupied or?
Owner-occupied only, yeah, that's sort of mixing a bit, but trying to explain as we're going that there's certain things that we don't have answers to that play into this.
I guess another thing that we may not have an answer to either is the, as you get up into the higher-income areas, I mean, people who may have a cabin or a second home in Florida or something, I mean, it's hard to, I guess, we don't have much for data on that in terms of how they may be spending additional resources on housing, but just not in Eau Claire.
It's important to say, again, this is affordability, this is necessarily, if you're in this income bracket, you're going to buy that house. But Josh, you're going to ask as well.
I think, to answer your question, Jeremy, this is, this asks to see your primary dwelling. So, this wouldn't, you wouldn't be capturing second homes in here. The other is that this is only wage income that's showing, it's not income from other sources. So, if you are a small business owner, for example, or retired person who's getting their income from other sources, that's not reflected in here either. And so, that's some place we need to do more homework, because people generally, especially in higher incomes, are, have resources other than just wage available.
Right, and so, yeah, there's the average income and median income that shows some of those numbers.
Yes, just to clarify, affordability is considered 30% or less of your income on this graph?
Well, this, I'd certainly shook, well, yes, it would be, because the middle number, again, this is a little bit hard to read. The middle row here talks about what that mortgage would be.
I seen that right, Josh?
Yeah.
What you can afford with this income bracket.
Yes, so what Cedar Corp did is they provided us a baseline scenario is, if you're paying 30% of your income based on a 4%, I believe it is, it says in the report, and 5% down, what could you afford? And then, they just.
That's what they said.
You know, they put for the median in each of those income brackets.
We'll jump ahead with that real quick.
So, therefore, if you've owned your house for a long time, you purchased it at whatever it was cost at that point. So, that there's some other complicating factors. You know, this is just, if you bought a house today, what would you be able to afford based on?
Yeah, and here's that, here's that number.
I was going to say, I seem to recall that, did that also include principal interest taxes and taxes?
Yep.
So, it wasn't just the mortgage cost?
Right.
It also included your taxes.
Correct, yes.
Not sure if it included your insurance or not, but certainly, I recall it included taxes.
Yes, thank you for that, yeah, this is, maybe you could be better labeled here. So, jumping ahead, this is a slide that was shown last night as well, that talks about what that maximum affordable loan, talking about 30-year mortgage, 40% interest, 5% down, 50% bill rate, so again, taxes, all interest, all that included. Again, it's just a sample size to give a picture of what is, trying to say, what is affordable in Eau Claire County and who can afford it and at what cost, is really what we're looking at. Jumping back one real quick, this is also shown last night, just to show kind of where housing valuations land. Again, mentioned last night, between 100 to 200,000 is really the beat of what the housing stock is in Eau Claire. Just to set the bar of where we're at, so we can start diving down a little bit deeper moving forward. This is the kind of best data we have, and where can we go from here? What valuations are out there? Again, for homeownership, this is what we're talking about here, I should clarify that, we're talking about homeownership component or prong. It was kind of a preview to what Dale will be talking about here shortly. One of those prongs is, again, that homeownership or valuation.
Altoona has almost doubled the less than 50,000 as a percentage.
So, I don't know that that would be the raw numbers, but as a percentage, they have.
Percentage, right. Yeah, sorry, this is percentage and not a basic number, sorry, as a percent of the total.
But yeah, that's a notable difference in terms of the housing stock in Altoona versus Eau Claire.
Well, in the same.
In Chippewa, too, I mean.
Yeah, and the same on the upper end as well. There's a same percentage difference. Yeah, we're in Eau Claire, so. So, let's keep moving.
There are bookends.
What's that mean?
Yeah, we don't get 50%, how is that? But they have almost 50% more, it's less than 50, they have almost 60% more in this, on the high end.
Their line is flat. So, they have a wider range of home valuations. Yeah, I guess you could say options or something to that. Yeah, I guess you could say options or something to that, again, as a percentage, though. So, housing cost burden, just wanna talk about this, this is a number, thanks to Josh as well for drilling down a little bit further in some of these numbers, to get us, uh, some of these figures, now breaking out a little bit more detailed, uh, by city, by county.
The source of the data.
The source, this is, this is Cedar Corp, or is this...
This is American Community Survey.
Oh, it's an ACS, okay. But it's newer data, so some of this might be newer than what the ALIS figures are.
Correct.
So there might be some differences in actual numbers, and seeing, oh, wow, that's a little bit different than what ALIS says, so...
So ALIS used data up through the twenty sixteen data release, and then late last fall, the twenty seventeen data became available, and so, we're, we're in the process of, when we began this task force discussion, we were using twenty sixteen data, and now we're...
Right.
Updating those tables where, where they're available, but then some of the data like from HUD is older, and so, you have to look and see what the data source is to make sure we're comparing same time period.
Thanks, Josh, so yeah, this, uh, again, talking about that cost burden, and, uh, now we're kind of starting to switch over to that renter, uh, conversation and cost burden, again, we talked about thirty, over thirty percent, I could have highlighted both of these rows here, but, uh, pointing, just wanna highlight that there are twelve percent in the renter category that are over fifty percent cost burden. And again, it's not just the housing costs, it's, it's all those different categories, uh, that, is that right, it's all the different categories? Or are we just talking about housing?
Just housing, right.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and, and, and income, because it's a percent of income.
You're right, you're right. And so, again, what this does is, it starts to point, you know, paint a picture of here, there are over four thousand, um, households that, uh, that have cost burden that they're dealing with now. Um, again, jumping to ownership back, or back to ownership again, uh, shared this last night as well, just showing you some, really rough averaging, just showing that, uh, roughly forty percent of Eau Claire, uh, homeowners have a mortgage of a thousand to fifty thousand, with the median there at twelve, twenty seven, so it just gives you, again, these are just snapshots that we can start using to populate, um, strategies moving forward, and speaking to other data that we still need to find. Uh, same with, uh, without a mortgage, so let's say you paid off your house, uh, the difference is quite, quite surprising. Now, again, this could be part, is because these are the older homes, these homes from, you know, go back thirty years, these homes from seventies and eighties, that are now paid off, and they're paying such a low mortgage, are they even older than that, they've been paying this, you know, four hundred ninety-nine dollars for, you know, fifteen, twenty years? It's just interesting how those numbers play out, and those are, you know, as the housing costs make a difference between mortgage versus...
Just to clarify that, that is insurance and taxes?
Taxes and everything, yes, so, yeah, those are kind of, utilities? Do you know that, Josh, is there utilities in here? I don't know if we're in here.
I don't know that for sure.
Think so.
I don't know.
Uh, renters, so going back to renters, I think this is interesting as well, remember we, going back to the ALIS status, seven thirty-five is kind of a standard number? Well, there it is, uh, it's in between five hundred and nine ninety-nine, and sixty-three percent of renters are, are paying that amount. What's, I, I think what's important to note here is that, you know, thankfully, it's not at its higher end, um, but that, you know, this is kind of the majority of renters are paying what may be, um, you know, it's gonna be one of those things where if they're on closer to five hundred dollar side, they may not be ALIS. If they're eight hundred or plus, they may be. So this is something where we need to kind of, you know, even further window this down. You know, maybe it's a five hundred to six hundred, six, you know, kind of hundred by hundred, you'll, where are these folks?
With the average being the seven thirty-three.
Right, seventy-five, yes. Um, again, here's that cost burden, thirty percent or more, uh, that's kind of, it says forty-eight percent, we were talking about before, it's forty-six percent for Eau Claire, so with ALIS, so it's still pretty much in line with that. So, talking about actual numbers, in terms of where is, now, we're coming down further, or the, bring the plane in, close to the city of Eau Claire proper. And so, this is one number that just put together, and we're just releasing it, uh, in the, um, the new twenty eighteen development update. This is something that goes out usually this time of every year, uh, some planning staff put this together, and here's the trend line essentially, a table, uh, for new residential construction, basing it, you know, you'd type. So, we're, we're doing well in terms of numbers, in a general sense, two fifty-one, as we're trending. Uh, what I tried to, it's not on here, I'm just doing some rough, uh, math, using population projections, actual census data back from twenty-ten, and all the numbers that go in between that. Since the last, since the last census, uh, we've added sixteen hundred and forty-five units, that's going up through twenty seventeen, because our current population estimates only go up into twenty seventeen. And what's, what's awkward about this is, again, it's, population projections go through July, or to July one, and obviously, these numbers are December thirty-first, so it's not a perfect match, like I said, that's kind of what we keep running into, is that we find some pretty good data, but then things don't match up just quite right, and we need to do some refinement.
Scott, what's interesting about this data is that, you know, the single-family homes are at their high, um, in terms of clearly the single-family, and look at the condo numbers, I mean, twice what we've done any other year, so, um, clearly, you know, the marketplace is, um, certainly seems to be moving in that direction.
Right, so we're, we're, we're increasing, uh, the, I would say downside, but, you know, we've added sixteen hundred and forty-five units, that sounds great, however, during the same period, we've added over twenty-seven hundred people. So where do those, where do those folks go, and, you know, what, what is that storytelling? And that's, yes?
When a residence hall opens up, where, does that fit into multi-family then? What category is that?
Must be where that lands. I wasn't hearing twenty thirteen, but is that what happened?
Thirteen?
I don't think residence hall, residence halls...
It must not be, it must be much higher than that.
So, Scott, Scott, what you, what you said was, we've added, what, sixteen hundred dwelling units?
Mm-hmm.
And we've added, what, what was the other number?
Twenty-seven hundred people.
People, but don't you put, didn't you say earlier today that you put two-point-six people per dwelling unit?
Two-point-five, I corrected that, I corrected myself.
Two-point-five, so that's thirty-two hundred...
So we're keeping track, right?
That's four thou, four thousand dwelling units for four thousand people, and we've added...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven hundred people.
So are we tracking the right way? That's the question, are we, are we getting your number? And, but that's the thing we need to keep drilling down on, is that if folks are having, uh, housing affordability issues, is it just that, is it affordability, or is there, um, is there something else to this story? So, yeah, we're, we're tracking, we're increasing even better than we have recently, and so the next level of data we need to start talking about is the cost. Here's the average cost of a new single-family dwelling in Eau Claire, this is from last year's, um, kind of development map and report, uh, Pat Ivory in, in our planning office puts together, so we don't have the twenty eighteen number yet, here's twenty seventeen. And you can see, uh, this is going to be the real, um, one of the real issues we need to get addressed, and that is the increased costs associated with new dwelling units. So, I wanna point something else out as well, American Planning Association did some, uh, some data collection as well, and they're showing back in twenty sixteen, again, return here to twenty seventeen, in Eau Claire, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars, average cost of new single-family dwelling that was built in Eau Claire. So again, that's, those are the, of the new construction. Uh, the national average single-family home price was three hundred and fifty-six thousand in twenty sixteen, that's the national average.
A hundred thousand more.
Yeah, a hundred thousand more, and it's increased three, thirty-four percent over a five-year period.
Yeah.
So again, we're seeing similar trend lines, obviously, the numbers are lower, but why is it, uh, there, the disparity? It's gonna talk a lot about that income again.
Scott, Scott, this is, we've kind of looked at this regionally, the, uh, the numbers you showed on the building permits and stuff, does Altoona have anything similar to that?
In terms of this number?
Yeah, you know, you had the, not that, that one. Yeah, you know, the, the construction, do they have anything similar to that?
Yes, you have your annual numbers out.
Right, yeah, I can send that, we just finalized our numbers also.
Did you see similar trends, though, in condos and single-family?
Um, our single-family numbers are, are tracking pretty similar, um, our multi-families much bifur, more bifurcated, sometimes we have a project, sometimes we don't have a project. In term, in terms of like, we might have two years with no multi-family development, and all of a sudden, we have three in one year, so we have a smaller sample size, so one project...
Right.
It creates bigger changes.
Very, very...
Can I ask you guys, how do you, how do you count twin homes in your data?
Those condos, is that what you call those condos?
Uh, duplex?
Twin homes?
Uh, we track those separately, but they are considered to be condos legally.
Cause we haven't built, we haven't built any condos.
Yeah, that's most likely the...
Normally duplexes are rental, and condos would be considered owner-occupied.
Twin homes, it depends how they platted out or separated out, perhaps. So, yeah, you could almost combine the twenty-four and fifty, for the most part, assuming most of these condos are going to be the duplexes that are split, so. All right, and again, there's an asterisk here, just at, uh, for the transitional housing that was built, but, uh, that's not included in there, it's a different population, but, so going back to, uh, costs here, this is really what we're seeing a lot of, um, another small information from American Planning Association is that, uh, um, percentage of builders reporting a low or very low supply of lots, that plays into this, we do, we have that information here, uh, it, very low or very low supply of lots in their markets rose to sixty-four percent in twenty seventeen from just nine percent in two thousand nine. So, lot inventory is another, uh, component with this that raises the cost of the construction here, so a lot of things go into that, those are things that we've identified and talked with, uh, kind of our building and development sector, we did through the, within those groups in the task force. But, uh, again, as we're pointing out here, our trend line is pretty stable, pretty basic, uh, and we're, we're keeping up with, uh, demand for most parts, but, uh, it's really the, the costs that are gonna be the issue that we still need to start addressing moving forward. So, I'll turn it back over to Dale, uh, before we get into the more specifics.
Sure. So that's the data piece of our, of our work session, um, and, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of sifting and sorting that's happening with the data, there's still some grappling with, um, you know, validity of certain pieces of data and what we'd wanna track. We're committed to continuing to have the conversation around the data, because, you know, I think Catherine said the other night, um, something about, to the extent that was measurable, how do you, you know, how do, how are we gonna be able to, uh, understand whether we moved, you know, moved the dial, if we don't have the data that says that, you know, we can measure where we are today, and what we did, and did it move, and, you know, and then make the corrections or the adjustments that we need to make if we're not there with the dial the way, the way we want to, so. So, a lot more work still to be done on the data, and you'll see that, as Scott goes through the recommendations of, of the, of the report, from a, from a staff perspective, there's a lot of additional data analysis that, you know, is being recommended, um, and you're, can you see a little bit of that here? So, the, um, from, in that broader, bigger picture, though, what we're thinking is that this is a three-pronged approach, uh, there's been a lot of conversation around the rental, um, affordability, um, and that's, that's a good, healthy conversation to, to continue, but we feel that, that in addition to talking about the rental piece, it's gonna be very important to also be talking about the homeownership piece and having affordability in the homeowner piece, and so, we want to, um, you know, and you're gonna see in the recommendations that are coming, coming forward, that, uh, not only will we be focusing on the rental piece, we're gonna be focusing on the homeowner piece, and then there's this income piece, uh, which is, I mean, that just, just, it just, it's right there in the data, that, you know, we, we, uh, we have some, uh, some room to work with, uh, with attracting, you know, the higher, harder wages to Eau Claire, and so, um, as, as you're, you're gonna see the recommendations coming forward, that, uh, that it'll be all three prongs. So, what Scott's gonna do now is, uh, we've gone through the, the task force report in addition to, uh, just some, some other thoughts, um, and, uh, and looked at, what do we think we can take out from a staff perspective, both in the short term, midterm, and, uh, long term, and so, um, so, what, what Scott's gonna do is, is kind of go through things that, from a staff perspective and from a staff work plan, you know, we're, we're gonna start moving forward, and we're gonna start, you know, doing some of these things. What will, what will then remain is the conversation with the council at that higher level of goal setting, in terms of, as we start doing these things down here, what, what is the dot, what, you know, where is that measure, and where do we wanna be moving it to? And, uh, so, we're hopeful that all this conversation, including, uh, the, kind of the staff work plan side of this, um, will be helpful in keeping up that conversation when we have the goals conversation, uh, here, uh, at the end of March. So, with that, Scott, I'll turn it over to you to talk about some of the, uh, the work plan issues that we're pulling out in there, and then going forward with, um, from this, the task force.
Great, thanks, Tim. Again, just to, to frame the issue here, moving forward, uh, just to reorient ourselves, I talked about the goal statement, this is from the, uh, that task force summary from their, uh, report as well, they're bringing together, I wanted to bold, kind of the, the, kind of the short piece of that, uh, you know, why, what is the problem? What are we trying to address? Uh, we try to tell some of that story with the data in terms of, you know, is it supply? Is it, uh, income, is it these other costs apart from housing? Uh, yes, it's all of those things, uh, but to what degree, uh, is, is where we're kind of headed next? And what are the things that we can have these kind of quick, um, we can quickly address? What are the things that are gonna take a lot more, you know, data input and discussion? And, uh, you know, where we can focus our, our limited resources? So with that, again, the goal statement, uh, just right up front to say, you know, we provide fair and equitable access to safe, quality, healthy, stable housing for all individuals and families, that's the goal in mind. Now, how do we, in a manner of identifying that and, and address that? That's where we need to start having some more discussion. So, next, we're gonna talk about staff work plans, uh, say plural, but, uh, you can kind of look at each, um, timeframe as a different plan. As I mentioned, the task force conclusion, just talking to Josh beforehand, we're looking kind of mid-March here, next couple weeks to bring the group back together, uh, look at, uh, final refinement of the recommendations, uh, finalize the, uh, report development, and, uh, and then get, continue with the public presentations that we're doing here this week and next. And bolden here, this is what we're talking about here tonight, policy orders revision, you know, kind of deciding stage for moving forward, things like that, um, with our two-year work plan. And we'll kind of break it down into, uh, we're talking about kind of targets, performance measures, what can we measure, what we aim for, uh, based on what we already know, and what we're trying to, um, trying to know, trying to achieve. And then what are those implementation strategies, what are the, kind of how, what are we putting in place to make these things happen? Uh, and then finally, kind of, this is, this is kind of an outline of where the task force is going, and then the task force will also be looking at moving forward with the public-private partnerships and other community collaborations to keep this work moving forward on a regional level. So executive summary, again, just, uh, outline of the, of the summary itself, summary document, you talked about consensus statements, uh, we find affordable, uh, we find different housing segments, the, uh, what the income measures we're utilizing, again, what the data is that we're, we've identified, and I, as you can tell, that keeps growing, uh, each day. So summary recommendations, these are the five, uh, categories of recommendations that the task force landed on, based on a lot of the roundtable discussions, uh, back and forth, um, conversations, these different sector groups getting together, and what we've identified are, uh, kind of, I would say, necessarily in order, but in order, in a way, in terms of those things that seem to be the most impactful, according to the task force, and so, they've identified those as development regulations, city policies, public funding, those public-private partnerships, and also the civic area, uh, getting that engaged as well. So, from there, we want to talk about, uh, you know, staff came up with a concept of, you know, two-year work plan, can we break all of these different bullet points and ideas down into manageable bites, and approach it from these different perspectives, from a timing sense? So a short range being, uh, three to six months, and I've seen success in this with other, uh, you know, action plans, other strategies... So short range being three to six months, and I've seen success in this with other, you know, action plans, other strategies. From a planning perspective, I'm hoping you can apply it here as well, but you have these kind of quick wins that we can achieve in the first three to six months. And then mid-range, kind of what's that, that can kind of carry us forward momentum for, you know, six to twelve months window into the longer range pieces, which would be the larger, heavier lifts for the next year to two years. So with that, you have in front of you, hopefully, a draft four-page memorandum, it's called, but that's just a formatting term, which is the Affordable Housing Draft Work Plan. So we can, I just kind of walked through already, kind of say the stage, everything in the first page. The second page is really where we take, we've taken all of the recommendations from those different categories that the task force put forth and started breaking them down. And Dale and I almost did have an actual breakdown, but I ran out of symbols and colors to try to sort all these things. I should show you, I had to get more highlighters to color code these things, but try to identify, this is taking what the task force in regional sense to put forward. Again, not draft yet because either sometime, there's opportunities here to tweak some of this. And then taking that, what does that mean for the city of O'Leary? What does that mean for city council, the city of O'Leary moving forward? These are things staff are showing as, this is what we can take on or are willing to take on to help drive these things. These are the implement, essentially the implementation strategies, as it were, to carry forward this affordable housing concept. So with that, again, you can, I'll walk through each one of these if you're ready. I see Pizza just showed up just in time and you should have told me to hurry to help us because they know about it, but anyway.
People can just help themselves, so. Is that okay with you, Scott?
Yes.
For everybody in this room.
Happy to take a pause too, Daley, but, but with that, again, these are the three different categories. And you can see, for example, on the short range, it is a full page of sixteen different items. What we've done is bold the first group, and it happened to be ten, that's a top ten list, that seem to be the higher priority ones. So these are things where certainly these need to be shuffled around, perhaps, you know, okay, well, these all seem, these three seem to be fairly similar, can we combine them? Or, wow, that seems like a lot of work to do in three to six months, can we look at doing that later? That's a kind of a discussion we're going to have here, but we're looking for simple input moving forward. So with that, let me pull up a slide though that shows kind of how we've broken them down, or how we'd like to break these down, in terms of targets and performance measures. And then the implementation strategies to really kind of carry some of this forward. This is not exclusive, or, no, sorry, this is not inclusive of everything on, for example, page two. So we're talking about short range, three to six months, and we have these items. It's not everything on the slide, I just have a snapshot of how we're segregating these things and how our thinking is moving forward. So with targets and performance measures, one of the first things that seem to be pretty evident, pretty obvious, especially even after discussion last night, is to really continue the task force momentum and dialogue. And then if you kind of go across the line here, launch a regional citizen input group. So that's one way to essentially implement that and achieve that target. Another target is to identify local gaps in data, I've reviewed that several times, and gain insight into housing preferences. That goes back to that blue and orange bar, for example, that's talking about homeownership. There's a gap in terms of inventory, is that, is that a matter? Is it just saying though that, you know, folks are not interested in buying, they're, they're comfortable renting? That's where we assess experts in the field, such as Mr. Well here and such, to get some better, better data to drill down on those things. And then finally here, just establishing targets and goals for each housing segment. So that's not in this, this memo of breaking down each of those housing segments, but it is in that summary that was included in the council packet from last night. And that talks about, again, those who are experiencing homelessness and those who are experiencing very low income. We go to low income, middle income, kind of secure income, talking about the different income securities. And then the other segments associated with that, such as students, seniors, and those with disabilities. So with that, feel free to read through this, I may need to drink water or ten to walk through all these, but we can start kind of walking through each one individually. So the top ten, as it were, and if you're wondering, spoiler alert, there are twenty-two total. So, sorry, we fell short of the state of the city address of thirty.
I see way more than thirty.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thirty bit of them.
Yes, so short range, number one, again, these are taken almost verbatim from the task force recommendations. Some of these have some flavoring that these Dale and I have worked on and know others have had some input as well from staff. Again, to make those more relevant or specific to city of O'Learys. Number one, identifying periodically updated inventory of infill sites and redevelopment areas. That is obviously absolutely necessary to really establish our baseline of what we have and what we need. Number two, evaluate building and zoning fee reductions or rebates for projects that need affordable housing criteria. Sounds like a reasonable thing to evaluate, what, how that looks like? Yeah, that's, that's the effort for three to six months. Develop the affordable housing criteria for use in all their policies and programs. That can mean a lot of different things, but again, the, the task force is really giving each of the communities, each of the governing bodies some general guidance. And then, you know, each governing body can cut up with their own spin and what's great. Number four, create distributed resource packets for builders, owners, and renters that provide information on financing regulations and housing data. That's something I know we've already been working on. I know Josh and his intern had put together quite a bit of data already to get us to this point, so that's something we're working on as we speak. Number five, conduct a community-wide housing survey to address local gaps in data and gain insight into preferences and sentiment. That can be something quick and easy or it could be a huge endeavor. That's something, again, staff will start looking forward to narrowing down as we move forward. I can also read some of these off of the screen here as well. Again, conduct a community-wide housing survey, inventory infill sites, yes.
Quick question about, kind of related to that survey, the, with the twenty-twenty census coming up? Is there any way that we can like leverage that, like, you know, is there any sort of extra way to gather more data or, or like really? Obviously, we can put more money into making sure we're counted and advertise the census to people. I'm just trying to figure out, that'll obviously give us a lot of good data, but it won't be out until like twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two, I would imagine.
No, that's a, that's a great question, and certainly as there are questions or ideas along here, we can, we can talk about that. So again, just go back to this slide real quick before we go back to the paper. One is, explore creation of a lender's consortium, already been meeting with some of those folks. Create and distribute resource packets, as you mentioned, complete the work of investment health, connect, develop the community with funding for affordable housing. Evaluate these, as you mentioned, zoning regulations for housing, according with Randall Park and the new CDC, already took that with the group this afternoon, the lease was there as well, helping host. We are looking at things such as that. So again, go back to more specifically, I think, number six, consider adopt a TIP policy utilized as an affordable housing extension provision in state statutes. Number seven, consider policies required residential projects to receive public benefits from the city, where it's developed a property purchased from the city or RIAA to meet, you know, performance criteria related to affordable units and accessibility universal design, which is a design for all ages. Number eight, explore creation of a lender's consortium, as I mentioned, which is similar to the La Crosse promise that Anderson Health and others have helped facilitate reinvestment in key neighborhoods and improve housing stability for households. We're not according with the new Randall Park CDC, as I mentioned, to help identify key areas for reinvestment, redevelopment. Number ten, again, not in priority order here, but number ten, consider creation of a citizen input group of contributors active in the task force or a regional county advisory committee to function in an advisory capacity and coordinate institutionalized and ongoing policy focus on Chippewa Valley housing in general and affordable housing in particular. That is, those are not the words of the task force, those are modified words for, from city staff. And the concept of a citizen input group seemed to be something that stuck with how do we take a task force to that next, next level? The important part being to maintain it on that regional level, to really look at this, you having city input into that, obviously. But, again, not to simplify, I would say, not to just create another city committee, but to really look at how this be a regional group that moves forward. So, really retain that component part. Any questions on short-term before moving to midterm?
I think one on the regionality question, does the, does the West Center Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission like do housing-related study or collaboration?
Yes, they're working on one right now, if you know Josh, it's done, Barron County.
It's ongoing, I think.
Still going, okay, so yes, they've, they've been doing ones, they've been essentially acting as staff for counties that don't have that, that resource. So, and they've been engaged, they've been a part of the task force throughout as well.
Okay, okay.
So we have, we'll continue, remain engaged with them.
So, the, the eleven through sixteen?
Yes.
Those are, are they on the list of things that staff wants to do but are a lower priority? Or are they things that you are, have decided it's not worth doing?
Yes, it's a capacity, it's a value issue.
Yeah, lower, lower priority. Yes, I should mention, yes, this is all inclusive, this is everything the task force is recommending. So if there's anything you think is just too much for us to do, I'm okay with that, so.
But I, my question is, do you plan to do all sixteen of these things, but, but eleven through sixteen, you'll maybe, you'll maybe do them later?
Yeah, that's a good question, yeah, those are things that we, we could do in the next three to six months, I mean, just in terms of, it's something that can take three to six months, but we prioritize it as perhaps another three to six months. Alright, mid-range, targets and performance measures, really want to set targets and performance measures for the new smart housing program, which was identified in the budget. And really like to see what that will entail. Approve one or more missing middle housing developments, addressing needs of one or more of the vulnerable housing segments, that's, that's something that, you know, we just will approve one just randomly. But in other words, see if there's, you know, hopefully there's an interest in these types of development types that we can then really encourage and promote moving forward. I'll show you a picture of what that means. Here's the missing middle housing, again, we've, we've seen quite a bit, we can go back to that condos and duplex number, we had seventy-four of those units last year. But what are the other parts of that? What are some other pieces other than just, you know, big apartments and your standard detached, single-family homes? Again, we're doing a pretty good job at, at these needs in duplex side of things, but, you know, are there triplexes, fourplexes, are there townhomes? Are there some other, I'd say innovative, but building types that we've done before that could be done again? And so the idea of being, not just build this to build it to be a gentrified neighborhood, but build it so it can meet the needs of one of those housing segments, especially those that are more vulnerable. So, that again is a target for the next six to twelve months, can one of those projects come forward? We've been meeting with different developers, we've been meeting with community development finances institutes or institutions, CDFIs, they finance those types of things. And is that, you know, that's something we're, we're aiming for. Some implementation strategies around that, creating support services such as tenant landlord resource center, that goes along with that smart housing program. Lead renter and homeowner education mediation efforts, very similar to that. Provide zoning to lower greater density in appropriate areas, to see things more like that, or the missing middle housing. Relax required automobile parking where appropriate. And, you know, host one to two, although from housing tax credit workshops for the finance community and developers, bringing a lot of more interest recently, of course, from local developers who would like to pursue those types of things. But, you know, just a meeting this afternoon, we were talking about sophistication, education, information, just the things, just not, not having any experience in that. It's, it looks good and easy on paper and then what next? So there are local developers who want to make an effort and try those types of things, but just have not had, maybe do that before. So walking through the actual paper, there are just five that are bolded there, again, this is kind of that, that soft spot in between, kind of, these are things that would normally take six to twelve months. So that's, we identified those and put those in here, so that's half of the ten that we identified. Again, the creative, yes, creative support services, just tenant landlord resource center, partner with area nonprofits to host some of these education programs, like I mentioned, one of the housing tax credits. Mention revising zoning requirements, automobile parking, and then talking about a mix of uses housing types. You look at developments that are not exclusively one or the other, but have a mix of these types of housing types, obviously not going to say all of them, that would be something quite unique. So, any questions, sorry, back on the mid-range. Long range, we're almost there.
Scott, it's early, we could include, I don't know if you've covered it, but like expedited review for projects to include affordable housing?
Yes, we can.
Will there probably talk about how long it takes to, to prioritize affordable housing?
In terms of expedited?
Think about what, what does that mean, you know, expedited?
Yeah.
And, you know, I guess it's somewhat of a matter of perspective of how long it takes. I mean, we did a study on that about six or seven years ago, where we looked at our processes for approving projects. And the, the, the general consensus or the feedback that we received was interesting, that developers from out of town found that we were actually really quick and efficient and they could move through pretty quickly. The local developers, you know, were complaining that it takes too long to, to run the process. So, I guess, think about what does it mean to expedite? And, and I, I want to be careful before we commit to that, because I don't, I don't know what that means and what would that mean in terms of other projects? Or, I mean, does that mean something jumps in front of something else or?
Just a note, absolutely, I, I wrote down under the short range, number two, about evaluating, you know, building or zoning fee reductions, rebates, adding in, you know, evaluate expedite as an option to, to look at. But what exactly, what does that mean, what components could we address?
I had a comment from a constituent that said something had already been approved at the state level. And in order to get the permit at the local level, it was a law, secondary review, thinking when you're already on a time clock to get this approval, why does it take that long locally when it's already been approved at the state level?
Sure.
We've also seen that goes the other way too sometimes.
It does. State of the rights.
And this would be a local person, so it would, it would be a total.
Interestingly enough, I did the same study, the previous city I was at, and the exact same.
Okay.
Exact, exact same results were found, funny how that works, so. Yeah, it's the proverbial, everybody thinks you're slow until you ask somebody else, so. It seems to be the case, but yeah, that's something, if it's, it's been six, seven years, it's something we can always review as well. And each city will do, will operate differently, but you're right, that's a good one that we can roll down on as a city. So, long range, moving into that, there are quite a few, actually, some of the, the largest list, not trying to just say we're pushing everything else out even further. I should also notice if, or note if it hasn't been noticed yet, that, you know, we have those five different categories of recommendations. We did not distinguish between those, the idea here is to really look at the timeline and then prioritizing within that timeline and not distinguishing between what we really want to address, you know, public funding, so that's going to be first. so that's going to be first. It's really looking at everything holistically and see what we can do in those different timeframes. So long range, targets and performance measures, just, you know, I think we can all agree, and task forces have been trying to, you know, wrestle with, could we come up with a number? Is there a number we can land on? I've not found that yet, but essentially reduce number of cost burden residents, both owners and renters. How can that be done through, you know, how these housing strategies? When we know for a fact that we've laid out with the data, there are all these other factors at play. So again, twelve to twenty-four months, can we see that house number gets, is really what I'm trying to say, can that be small? That's an aspirational goal, it's something perhaps that may be, you know, longer process than twelve to twenty-four months, but it's something that, you know, it's, it's worth bringing out there as an aspirational. Implementation, implementation strategies, of course, track and report the house-related data and figures, keep tabs on that, as Joshua has already done. We see year to year, if not quarter to quarter, new numbers come out that keep refining the information we're going to have. Consider creation of community land trusts, housing co-ops, you know, just trying to provide an environment where those can be developed and drive. And consider undertaking targeted land assembly, the RDA's been doing a great job at that already. And is there something else that could be more strategically tied to that? So the long range goals, number one just talks about that, creation of prioritized development areas. Number two, same thing, consider undertaking targeted land assembly activities. And then number three, organizing energy capacity building events, connecting all these folks together. Just, some of these, they say long range, one to two years, but they, they can be ongoing as well. Celebrate projects and programs, especially deliver positive neighborhood change in housing affordability. We always want to celebrate our successes. Develop and support existing neighborhood associations as contributors of housing efforts. A lot of, a lot of you around the table have already been instrumental in making some of that happen. Consider creation of community land trusts, as I mentioned, housing co-ops, other models, building wealth through owners, so it's more of a different ownership, ownership style, looking at some of these different, you're going to see middle opportunities, these core apartments, bulk of course, we've talked about pocket neighborhood in the Canary District and things like that, having a hard time getting off the ground, what can we do to, you know, lay the groundwork to make those things successful? And then number seven, improve use of CDFI programs to support housing projects. Say it's long-term, we're already getting interested in connection with folks through that already. So in conclusion, list is rather exhaustive. Again, it's not a detailed characterization this time, beyond just the, kind of the bolded segments and the different timeframes. So the, always recommending, or mentioning that these top parties that have the highest chance for immediate sustained success, those are ones in bold, we have twenty-two of those in the map, that's one a month. We can do that. So these can be combined, and again, when this could be more. Yes?
Long range plans are, I don't know if this is right or not, but I know we talked about it, should the city, should the city be looking at, within the city to redevelop and those types of things with this? Would it, would it not be, or could it not be the mission of the redevelopment area for that number two? It seems like they'd be a perfect organization to try to target and assemble sites and that type of thing. RDAs, we're but done with the block seven on the Lion Building, they're working on the Canary, but it, it almost seems like that might be sort of a mission that they, they could undertake.
After, I'm actually meeting my chairman, he wasn't available for the last meeting, but we're trying to meet before our March meeting. The plan is to start addressing the role of RDH and taking, providing acquisition and then we'll start talking about their concept and their roles and what they, so that's, that's already on the plan to start addressing that, right? Yes, so if some of these can happen faster than the timeframe identified, even better. Absolutely. All right, with, sorry.
Just on this last one, I see the map, this zone, future land use and zoning. That seems like a potential for, when our comprehensive plan gets reworked, is that what you're thinking of pushing it off of the top seven? Is that for longer term?
Yes, most certainly. Again, these are recommendations from the task forces also, these are regional in origin, but now we're, we're trying to apply them locally to city over there. This one exactly, that's where we landed on, one to two years, because our next kind of midterm update will be twenty-two for the comprehensive plan. So that's within that one to two year factor.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's not bolded here, but you see that included in our cost plan discussion?
That would make sense in terms of the process. So again, tried to, tried to break these down, just to get started with our work plan moving forward into these targets, performance measures. What can we actually identify, measure, track, and then the implementation strategies of those methods, obviously, to make those things happen? So that's what we set forth for you in the rest of that's here. And this is the very last slide, I promise. And this goes back into the, kind of.
So the cart's hitting maybe a little before the horse, and so we're talking about, you know, work plans and what, you know, do to do. But at some point, we need some higher level council policy goals and, you know, around this. And so our thought is that with all the data, the conversation, the things we're putting out there from a work plan perspective, start thinking about, you know, where we might want to go with goals. We will, when we, when we come to the, the work session that we're going to be having on goals here in March, we're going to be spending some time thinking about what those might be, so we can suggest some to you, so we don't have to maybe create them from scratch. We're digesting, we're on this journey with you, but, you know, the, having those higher level, longer range goals that I think will be very helpful, because then as we go through our annual buying and working, you know, we'll be able to do things that actually enforce those goals. And we'll be able to measure and see whether we're actually achieving those goals or not achieving those goals. So that's, that's the proposed next steps. We're also looking for feedback on kind of where we're at and what you heard tonight. But thinking of the next steps are, what are those higher level policy council goals and having that work be done here in, at the end of March, I guess the twenty-sixth? Feedback? We're done, we're done talking.
I think you guys have done a lot of work, I'm actually kind of, I'm pretty impressed actually.
I can't believe you did all this in six months.
It was eight months, but thanks anyway.
It's still impressive.
So I have some, maybe some feedback I could give, trying to just think about the policy side of things. And first wanted to say thank you, a gazelle's, this is amazing, so thank you. I guess if I were to pick my number one thing, and I have a few more, but if I were to pick my number one thing, I'm struck by the, the goal question that was set out. And the end of the goal question states that these efforts have to address the disparities resulting from differences in rate, race, ethnicity, income, and location. I think we talked about some of them, income and location perhaps, not necessarily maybe all four of those together. And so I'm wondering if there isn't, I mean, this could be achieved a few different ways. One is say, okay, well, let's pick these three things and we'll really hunker down on this. Or this is where I might ask Lisca for her professional opinion on perhaps applying a comprehensive health impact assessment or health impact lens that incorporates all of those, those items, so that when decisions are made, then it's filtered through this, you know, health equity lens or health impact lens, I think it might be called, I don't know if there's a difference between impact or equity lens, but, you know, because if we think about, okay, well, housing, transportation, and health are, you know, the three major.
Tied together.
Yeah, they are all tied together. So what if, what if we layered on this lens that then helped to systematically address some of those other issues, if we're saying these things must be addressed? So that would be one thing that I would really encourage us to consider. And then just thinking about how does transit intersect here? You know, I'm really grateful that Lisca's here tonight, and I'm sure you've got ideas of, and suggestions for, for us to consider, and just to make sure that we don't forget about transit as well, and, and have these plans talk to each other. This is for you all to decide, of course, but adequate staffing, you know, like this is ambitious, these are ambitious goals?
They are.
Really ambitious. And so I would say for myself, if, if staff feels like they want to come back and make a, an adjustment to your staffing needs, please come and talk with council. Please do. I'm sure everybody wants to see this effort be successful, so please come and talk with us. And then I'd be interested, Erin, I think this might be a question for you, is what's council's job to partner on creating a more skilled labor force to match these high-paying jobs? So of course we have educational partners who are already doing this. I don't know that answer, but, you know, if there's something that we can do to help get our community ready for these high-paying jobs, I think that's important. Last is, you know, we've got these community development block grant funds that we have consistently kind of entertained for outside organizations.
So may I?
Please do.
So in the application process this year, we put a sentence that said, projects, something like that, I don't know, but it said something like, projects that emphasize or focus on affordable housing will get higher priority. So we are just now going through that process, and we don't know what we'll get for applications that will come in, or in, in terms of projects or ideas that help towards affordable housing, but we intentionally built that into the RFP that's out there right now. The committee will be receiving those different proposals, and so you might, that is what we said, is we wanted to make that a priority and give higher priority to projects that, that focus on or work towards affordable housing issues. So we'll see what we get.
So that's, that's helpful to learn. As I understand it, those funds could also be, we don't necessarily have to call for proposals, that the city could apply those dollars to projects.
That is true. We would not have to.
Made that be a big shift.
We would not have to allocate all of them, you know, to outside organizations to do it, right?
Yeah, so I think just having that conversation around, I mean, that's kind of a, that's a, that kind of, it's a huge conversation to have.
It is, it is.
It'd be a huge shift.
Yes.
And yet, that's a chunk of money that is qual, it's, these are all qualifying expenses. And if we're looking for money, I mean, that's a, that's a tangible way that we can help.
So we've queued up the conversation, we'll see what comes in, and you're absolutely right, it doesn't have to be a recommendation, it's all given to outside organizations.
What about my is there?
Easy.
The grant, we don't know what our funding will be for two thousand and nineteen, but we assume it will be approximately the same as it was last year at about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
A question about the, I guess, in the long term, or, yeah, long range goals in number thirteen and fourteen, the non-bolded ones. I was kind of, they're, they're related to our, you know, work on environmental issues, reducing utility costs and, you know, building greener buildings in the city. And I'm wondering how, you know, this may relate to our renewable energy action plan and then the, and some of the other work that's happening in plan commission to, to really kind of explore, like some things in the next year through that process, but yet this is a little bit further down the road and a little bit less realistic from your perspective to be able to do soon. But is there anything that you could think of adding that, that relates directly to affordable housing that is going to be covered through the renewable energy action plan?
That's a good question. Other than, I can go back to this picture again, just, because I like it. Terms of these different housing types, that would be something that would be, would be addressed. I know Ned has some ideas in terms of, he's seen some, some sample or example of neighborhoods that have been built, you know, say off the grid, but really that are one hundred percent renewable. So we may, we may identify some best practices to make that happen through the renewable energy action plan, and that can tie into some of these, yeah, those there too. And then become, you know, affordable housing through that process, you can build affordable housing with those best practices.
Kind of along the same lines, we, we sort of started a conversation about, I'm forgetting the name, but like setting aside Parkland.
Parkland.
Yes, right. We started a conversation around that, and I, I guess maybe like six months, six or nine months ago. And I, I don't want to get that to get lost in, in this. I think that, you know, those sort of amenities are still really, as we're like trying to make things cheaper and easier, I think that we need to still be kind of mindful of building neighborhoods that are strong and, and have green space and foster a sense of community and, and, you know, reduce crime and all of that. And so were those kind of things, and in particular, the parkland dedication considered in the, in the study?
Not in this particularly, it is on the plan commission's two thousand and nineteen work plan though. So that is still something that they're going to work on.
So do you, do you anticipate that kind of thing will be considered comprehensively though, in, in how we, how we kind of rework our housing policies?
I'm sure it will come up, especially as we start talking about, you know, the fees and the building fees and such related to that, in that short term. So I can see falling here that number two in the short term.
We'll have to work through that, because at its core, parkland dedication raises the price, right? Right? So you have competing.
How do you balance that?
Yeah.
So it'll be something that'll be evaluated as part of those.
I just want, that was on my mind too, in fact, I wrote it down here under, when we talked about consider policies and the revising the zoning requirements, page three, you know, can we hold in the parkland dedication? Some of the, looking at everything, you know, Altoona already has parkland dedication. And I've talked to builders that are in favor of this, you know, they just know it's part of the deal, and, you know, if our next door neighbor is doing it, are doing it, it's almost where redoing everything, I think it makes sense. And Terry and I talked a long time ago, I think you and I talked about that too, bringing it into the affordable housing conversation that was summer, but I think it makes a lot of sense.
And this is the piece again that was missing in this, intentionally is missing in the forepage here, are the different categories. So it is a little bit hard perhaps to pull some of those out, to identify, you know, these illicit or developed regulations. And it's easier to fit in parkland dedication such if we can give you a category, so. Josh is coming about Altoona's parkland dedication.
No, but there was a couple of case studies that were mentioned in the longer report where communities in other parts of the country which have substantially higher impact fees than we do, they allow, or they have a formula for reductions if you meet certain things. So for example, if you have a project where thirty percent of the housing units meet whatever income criteria, then those units don't pay the parkland dedication fee or whatever impact fee they're attaching it to. When we had a conversation with the developers around here, they said permit fees were not even something they considered, because they're so low here compared to other regions.
And compared to housing costs.
And compared to housing costs, right.
Construction costs.
Yeah, right. And I think the other side is parkland dedication is, as you said, how do we get to parkland then? So it's either we're able to reserve that space strategically when a development occurs, or does the city have to come back and buy it later? And then who's paying for that? Because usually in the front end of the development, if you're not reserving it then, you try not getting the checks.
Much more expensive later. And there are both pieces to that parkland dedication. It's one thing if you have a large piece of land and the developer just doesn't get to develop that piece of it. That's different than you have a whole series of smaller ones, where you've collected fees that are that new state or to buy other properties. So you have two, two pieces to that that you got to work through. Other feedback or thoughts?
Yes, sure.
I was kind of wondering, I'm not sure where this fits, it seems like it's a broad lens though, which I brought up before a little bit in our last work session, but just the whole idea of making sure that it's always in front of us, that we have like a pretty substantial existing housing stock and. substantial existing housing stock and how do we take advantage of what we have and make sure it's revitalized and repurposed the way, you know, maybe families are, have changed significantly since the 1950s or something. So, in terms of the, how do we, how do we retrofit the city? And...
So, we've got a lot of conversation around that particularly as it relates to, I mean, I think our, our, you know, our focus on the park, you know, we have, you know, some of the things we want to do, I mean, that's why we had the, you know, the new development corporation that's there, that's why we put it there the way it is, and kind of queuing that up for those conversations about the redevelopment, the conversion of, of some of those properties there. And I think we'll, we'll learn a lot as we start handling it out there.
And I guess, like, one of the things we talked about at Plan Commission was, was accessory dwelling units, like, how those could, and those aren't specifically called out in here about, for exploration, but they, it seems like Plan Commission is still exploring that to an extent. Because it seems to be kind of delayed.
It's one of those where there, we have provisions that allow it, but is that sufficient to, is it sufficient to establish an environment where it's welcome and encouraged? Does that, does that make sense?
So, they're considering, both Plan Commissions currently considering language, or language around that?
Specifically related to that, but, that language, but the, the struggle we've had as staff, as we've done a lot of research, is that university towns have a lot more difficulty dealing with the ADUs, accessory dwelling units, in terms of how does it impact a neighborhood character and neighborhood stabilization? And so, those are things that if we go forward in that realm, what does it look like? It, it will probably look different than an off-the-shelf accessory dwelling unit order to may find elsewhere, because it has to be very explicit to a university's situation. So, all the, for example, all the university towns in Wisconsin that we, of similar, you know, size roughly, you know, La Crosse, Oshkosh, others like that, if not, if you know that, Josh, if you did any research, or we did that in Eau Claire, so I don't know if you've done any stuff with it, but there's just a, a lack of provision for that.
Yeah, or they're so restrictive that it's like, it's almost onerous to...
Right, that's kind of, we have the provision, but it's not very...
Right. So, there, there are some that like say that you, the, the owner must live on site, and if the owner is no longer on site, then you must decommission the dwelling unit. Case studies look at where those were adopted five or six years ago and they have like a single-digit number of those that actually occurred.
Right.
But...
From a community like that as well.
Yeah, right.
Where it's very tentative and trying to try those out before we just open the floodgates, as it were.
Yeah.
Tiny houses is another one that has been brought up. I know Chip of Balls has some provisions for that, and we've been tracking what they're doing up there to see how that's operating as well. But, you know, there's certainly some other innovative ideas beyond just my favorite picture in terms of, you know, accessory dwelling units, tiny homes are not in this picture.
A bungalow court.
A bungalow court, but that, I suppose that would fit.
Yeah.
They're so tiny, you can't even see them.
Yeah, thank you. But, yeah, those, those are certainly part of, and that's why, again, unfortunately, you don't have all the categories in this four pager, but, you know, that would fit our development regulations, and that's certainly something that Task Force has discussed and something that's in the whole, their overall summary recommendations and will be in the final report. It's just not explicit in the work plan here.
Scott, would you mind just saying a little bit more what you meant about the accessory dwelling units having a hard time in university towns? I wasn't quite sure what the impact was.
Well, it's, you know, things become, you run to the, you know, the rental situation where it's more transient population dealing with accessory dwelling units. So, traditionally accessory dwelling units, again, terminology has, has evolved from grainy flats and such to accessory dwelling units or ADU because planners decided that they didn't have them. So, it's typically something where, last house, I've mentioned this before, a previous house, my last city, had an interior or attached accessory dwelling. It was for one of the parents of the previous home.
Mother-in-law suite.
Yeah, mother-in-law suite is another, exactly. So, and literally it was for the mother-in-law, but in that case, but that, there could be attached and detached accessory dwelling units. So, when you start talking, particularly about attached, you start talking about multiple kitchens, you start talking about a lot of health, public health gets involved through, through some of that as well, and all of a sudden you've turned, you know, perhaps a single-family neighborhood into duplexes and triplexes and such. And again, it's not, not a judgment on that, it's just that's a shift. That's a shift in that neighborhood character, that's a shift in perhaps housing stability in that area as well. So, it's certainly a conversation still to have, as we go back to what we're talking about the Plan Commission, is that they're still having that conversation, because philosophically, it's a, it's a shift.
I always add to that, just, the community that I came from is a, is a university town, 6,000 tenants and population, 22% of students live off-campus. They had a very liberal attached dwelling units policy to allow to accommodate the university, and they're in the process of greatly tightening controls because they ran into a lot of issues with structures and what students are living in and health issues co-violation, I mean, just a lot of problems. They, they, they tried to be too accommodating and they're now in the process of nearly doing away with attached dwelling units, ADUs, because it caused such a problem, and they're trying to fix it.
Other feedback, we've been going an hour and a half, other feedback, yes, Jer?
I just want to throw in there, we, we haven't touched at all about trailer homes, which traditionally were the affordable housing alternative. And with the difficulties that we're having in Eau Claire, it would be nice to have that kind of in there as to moving that down the road to...
So, we've been, we've been having some conversations internally, and I think really, Scott touched on it when you, when you talk about a tiny home, what does that mean? And, you know, I mean, I think when people say a tiny home, there's, there's, you know, certain images that come up with that. But if you think of smaller homes, right, and perhaps much smaller homes, what does that look like? Where, where would those go? How would they be? And you're absolutely right that, that the, you know, like a mobile home has fit that bill, but are there other construction techniques or other ways where you can fill that niche in terms of safe, affordable structures that aren't all that large? And how does, how does that fit? You know, what does that look like? And, I mean, we're, we're working with the, with the Maples neighborhood, you know, in trying to bring up the quality of the, of the housing there, what that may look like in the future could tie into this conversation.
I think the benefit too of that neighborhood is they can own their home, they own their trailer, so a lot of people that live there can't rent, you know, we hear that a lot.
Right.
You know, because conviction records or eviction records or whatnot. So, owning the home, going back to owning homes allows them to have a home.
Right. So, when we say that, you know, there's different problems, there's the renter and then there's the ownership, but, you know, we're thinking about ownership at all of the affordable levels.
Yeah, yes.
And, you know, what, what will that look like at that low end where people can have a sense of ownership and still have it be, you know, safe and, and healthy? Is, if there's a lot, there's still, we can have a lot of conversation about that.
It'd be interesting, obviously, I've done no research, but it'd be interesting to see if something is attached to the ground, does it maintain its value the way a trailer does not?
Yeah, we've been finding a lot of, oh, Josh?
I don't know, I have an answer on that, but mobile homes are very specifically legally-defined structure and ownership than a tiny home would be, where a tiny home might be, it could be prefabbed and brought into a site, it could be built on-site, but a manufactured home in a mobile home community is a very specific legal thing, which has its own challenges to manage it. And I think some of the things that I've understood from a distance happening with the Maples, and we fortunately have avoided with the current owners of the trailer park in Altoona, is that there, it's not how you handle any other kind of development in the city, essentially.
Because it's handled with different codes.
Right, and then federal gets into it and land tenure gets into it. So, if someone owns their unit but they don't own the land, and so...
It's a very neat situation housing-wise.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And also too, I was reading some research as well, and there's a lot more new research on mobile parks related to this that we're investigating. Even just inventory-wise, it's not one housing segment that has actually declined in inventory over the last several years, whereas others you keep building, building. It's one that has become less of that, and it's become a little bit more, obviously kind of corporate, upper large-scale corporations or businesses start buying them up and, you know, it's, it's turned into a lot different thing than it used to be, so, but still only about viable options.
Yes, Jer. One thing I was wondering about is I, it'd be nice to have some sort of update on how our rental registration program is going and, you know, perhaps we could help inform if we would want to change it in any way. I know we kind of were as aggressive as we could with it, given some of the state restrictions, but I just wonder if it might be able to help us with data collection at a certain level and getting a snapshot of where we're at, which at least in the rental world, is this, I would imagine it'd be the first year we actually have a, have a snapshot from 2018. I don't know if we have any idea of what percentage of the actual rentals we managed to capture with that, but...
I don't know, is there any thinking, is there any report or update or...
We can give a report, absolutely, and I don't want to misspeak, but well, I know a couple of months ago, we were well over 85% of the rentals, I believe, registered, but there are a fair number that, you know, still are tentatively known about, so, you know, Maples, as we were just discussing, you know, is that a renter situation or not? In some cases it is, for example. So, but yeah, we can give an update on what data we have and, you know, that would be helpful to the conversation.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. Anything else, then?
I have a...
Yes.
Though I love the right nimby to yimby, did you make that up?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Josh, did you make that up? Somebody made that up.
It's really good.
I saw it on ULI.
Yeah.
There's a big movement out there that's, it's been around probably for at least a decade, maybe longer, but it's really been picking up speed in the past few years as people have become more active in their, in their neighborhoods, I think, especially in places where housing is much crazier than it is here, saying that, yeah, we, we do need to, there, there's a more active community saying, yes, we do want to see some more housing, or potentially more commercial opportunities in our neighborhood, try to kind of counterbalance what often are just a minority of people who are very vocal saying, I don't want, I think it changes.
Yeah, I've seen that too, I've heard that. I, my point, I guess, is I see all that at the end, and so, I think though to really put the most out of that, it should start at the beginning. I know that having those conversations with neighborhoods and that public input, I think people just like to know what's going on and that, you know, there's, there are nice catch 22, I know, that they keep everything on the down-low because they were scared they're going to get yelled at, and that's what happens, but the neighborhood doesn't know what's happening, then they find out, okay, in two weeks.
Yeah.
You know, there's going to be 27 homes built, so it becomes, but I, I know that developers really are nervous about bringing it, but just, I put in flip-flop that, you know, that requires trust, I know, but earlier in the process, but I don't, I guess I would rather start working on that sooner than two years, getting that switch, that, that you can do that with public education. Doesn't have to be a formal thing right away, but in what ways, with the neighborhood associations. And I've even thought about bringing neighbors, or builders, to the neighborhood associations, you know, and I know they'll be nervous, but, you know, starting those conversations right away, I mean, I could do that next month, you know, so...
Yeah. I think it's actually excellent comment because a lot, most of the people who are involved in Task Force are not public employees or not elected either, and so, if we really want to make systemic change, we need people who are pushing in the same direction or at least similar complementary directions. And so, from a city staff perspective, that's something we'd like to enable, but there's a, a time and an appropriateness question about what we can do. And, so, we're hoping that we can help people who are, who are involved in that conversation in the community, help them be effective, but then we got to have to get out of the way and let them do the community organizing.
Yeah, and it's probably more effective that way anyways.
Yeah.
You know, hearing it from their neighbor than hearing it from the city, you know, it's more grassroots.
Anything else? Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, really, you're a nice approach. Thank you, like, the...
Thanks to Josh.
No, I feel...
(applause) This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689 or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.